Over to the consent agenda, the new business and Mr. Dice if you would.
Yes, tonight we have three applications on the agenda. One is for a site plan, another is for a subdivision, and a third is for the conditional use of Imamia Organization of Pittsburgh. A conditional use takes on a unique characteristic under the municipality's planning code. It requires that council conduct a public hearing when a conditional use is sought under our zoning ordinance. This is the date and time set for that public hearing on this application, which is known as 14-5-C. Before we swear everybody in, Jamie, can you give me a short version of what this is about and why it's a conditional use application?
It's a conditional use application because there are two zoning districts currently, and a church as a use is a conditional use, only a conditional use in R2 zoning district.
Okay, and it's zoned R2, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, anybody that intends to offer testimony in this matter, you want to stand and raise your right hand. If you're going to testify, get up and you're going to be sworn in.
Yeah, if you're going to speak, you need to raise your right hand.
If you don't want to speak, you can sit down. But if you want to talk, raise your right hand and repeat after me, okay? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay. All right, this is your application, and when I say your application, Imamia's application, I saw a number of people stand up. Who could, someone who is representing Imamia identify themselves? Okay.
Thanks, Mayor and all members.
State your name for the record.
My name is Dr. Hashim Raza.
Do you want to spell that?
H-A-S-H-I-M, last name is Raza, R-A-Z-A.
Okay, please.
And I'm here just to present our community, and I am a physician here in Monroeville area since 1996. I have been in Pittsburgh since 1993. Most of my work is in Forbes Hospital, and I represent Imamia Organization of Pittsburgh. We are a small community, and we have this organization that was established in and around 1999, and we have a small house of worship in Blum that we established in 2005, I believe. Unfortunately, the house of worship was damaged in a, what we call sprinkler system busted, and it was damaged to the point that the reconstruction was very expensive. And the board at that time, after several meetings, decided to build a new house of worship, and we bought this current house and the lot on 351 Haymaker Road. Tonight, I will request the council, mayor, all the member to help us to go through this project so that we can establish something for our community to assemble and do our religious worship that, under the Constitution of America, we are entitled to. And I am open to any question, if all possible. Thank you for listening to me.
Okay, and I'm going to ask a few questions of our planning department. This is located at 351 Old Haymaker Road, is that right, Jamie?
Correct.
And can you tell us what abuts 351 Old Haymaker Road, north, south, east, and west?
Directionally, I'm a little challenged on that one, but on one side is Funeral Home. No longer Van Nuys.
You can help out, go ahead.
May I help? Okay, so northeast is the Old Haymaker Road, right across from Storage, Guardian Storage. And on our east is a building, which is your Parkway building, and on our northwest is a parking lot that belongs to...
Job Funeral Home.
Job Funeral Home, and then there is a house on, behind the parking lot, and on over back is the backyard of a house, which will be southwest. So that's it.
Another question for you, Jamie.
Yes, sir.
Have, has the planning department reviewed this?
Yes, sir.
Has the planning commission reviewed?
Yes.
And has there been any recommendations by the planning commission?
Planning commission's only comments, there are two comments. One, they wanted to see a sidewalk along Old Haymaker Road. The latest revision of the site plan we have shows that sidewalk, and the other issue was...
Traffic study?
No, not the traffic study. The HOP, they wanted proof that the applicant had submitted for the HOP to the state, and we have that proof as well, so...
Okay, so you have proof that there has been a submission for the HOP?
Correct.
It just hasn't been received, which is, that's the ordinary course of events, right?
Correct, and that was planning commission, they just wanted evidence that it had been submitted for, not that it had been...
And you have that?
Correct.
And the HOP follows generally these approvals, isn't that correct?
Correct.
Okay, does council have any questions?
What's HOP?
Do we have any drawings that we can look at?
There's actually a drawing next to Dr. Raza on the floor there, if you want to...
What is the HOP? Is that different than the traffic study?
Highway occupancy.
Highway occupancy.
It'd be a permit. If you lay it flat, the camera will get it.
There's an eye in the sky, Doc, right above you.
It's a permission from PennDOT to have a driveway accessing state.
Which means they do a traffic study prior to approving the HOP?
Correct.
And we haven't received that back yet?
We have a traffic study from their consultant. You want to jump in?
You want to come on up here to the mic, sir, sign in?
Did you get sworn in?
I'm actually the municipality's traffic engineer with HOP.
You think you'd, because you're the municipality's engineer, you don't get...
No.
You think you're above God here?
No, no, I guess I should.
Okay, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please come on up and sign in, state your name for the record. Welcome to our world.
I'll have to let Paul know to leave my name tag up there next time. Just to clarify...
Darren, if you would just state your name, please.
Darren Meyer, HRG, municipality of Monroeville, traffic engineer. We have reviewed a trip generation letter for the proposed development, and it did not need to have a full traffic study done per the ordinance based on the low trip generation of the proposed development. Basically, the peak hour trip generation was under the threshold requiring a traffic study. So we have reviewed the traffic, but there was no actual traffic study completed.
Okay.
Did you render any conclusions, findings, any, what's your position on this?
We see no issue with the development based on the proposed trip generation and site layout. Our primary concern is the PennDOT highway occupancy permit approval and that there's adequate site distance from the driveway.
Once again, there has been that submission, and you've seen that?
Yes.
Okay, and just so council's aware, that permit approval follows your site plan, conditional use, and subdivision approval. PennDOT doesn't give the HOP permit approval at this stage, is that my correct?
Correct, actually, they will require proof of land development submission for the...
They'll require proof that you, through the council, right.
So it would be contingent on our approval first?
Yes.
To receive that permit?
Yes. But understand, if PennDOT doesn't permit that, the plan goes nowhere.
Okay.
Can I have a request?
Jamie, I hate to put you on the spot, but looking at it on TV, could you just go up and point out what's what on the, what we're seeing on that drawing?
And this really blends into the site plan and the subdivision applications.
Right, at this point, we're just discussing a conditional use, but along with that, currently there are two lots, my pen is laying on the existing lot line. So the house and the front portion of the lot are on one lot. There's a rear lot that's kind of quasi-landlocked there. So as far as the subdivision goes, there'll be a lot line revision, so essentially this line will go away and become this line.
Is that Old Haymaker Road off to the right?
It's the Old Haymaker Road.
Right there, yeah.
And then the Job, the Job parking lot?
The Job parking lot?
Would be here.
Okay.
Here, and then Parkway Building would be here.
Actually, it would be easier to see on the color side.
Well, the lot lines will show up, it's good on the color side. But so essentially, you're taking two lots, making two lots, you're just moving the lot line, and essentially, you're going to make a big lot for their development and then cleave off the existing house onto its own smaller lot.
Where's the Parkway Building?
Parkway Building would sit here.
Okay. And then there were adjacent homes or backyards, could you...
I didn't flip it over since, I had a request for the colored version.
Point out where the adjacent...
There are residences down here, this is pretty much, correct me if I'm wrong, an empty lot mostly, these lots are very deep, so the backyards are, it's mostly empty field back in here, but this is Beatty Road running this way, so you have residential properties along this side. And once again, Parkway Building's here, there's a wooded hillside adjacent to the proposed building, parking lot. This driveway is the guardian self-storage driveway, so they're actually lining their driveway directly across the street rather than staggering them, so that should be better. Couple existing driveways and existing residences here, and then the intersection of Beatty and Old Haymaker up above.
So the home will stay? The home will...
Yes, ma'am.
What's the brown building that we're seeing on there?
This brown building here is the existing house that was the tailor.
Carmen, Carmen the tailor.
Yes, Carmen.
And this is the proposed worship center.
That's the new structure. What's the dark gray ones? The dark charcoal color?
This whole color in here, or these dash lines?
That, yeah.
These are the stormwater detention tanks, the underground tanks, there's actually two sets of tanks here.
Same one out front by Old Haymaker?
And this is a stormwater detention pond, a surface pond.
They're, so they're below surface level.
Correct.
So it'll improve the stormwater management in that area?
Correct, yeah, currently, there's nothing, and obviously, there's a pond.
Did you point out one more time the Job parking lot?
That'd be this parking lot.
All right, what's next to it? What's right there?
Here, yes. This is a home, correct?
Steve Fiskarich's house.
Petracca's.
Petracca's, I'm sorry.
That's a residence.
Thank you, Robert.
Correct.
Okay, now, will the home stay as is? The home will stay like as a residence, continue to pay real estate taxes?
Yes, ma'am.
But then the facility that's being built will be...
If, say, the organization is a tax-exempt...
Tax-exempt, so...
Nonprofit.
But the home, the home will stay on the tax rolls, and...
I think that's one reason we are separating is because home is a, it will be occupied and it will be, it won't be, will not be tax-exempted.
Okay.
Are the residents whose homes abut the project, are they aware of the project?
It's been advertised and posted, so my assumption is yes, I've not heard anything personally.
You follow the municipality's planning code?
Correct.
And Jamie, the church in a R2 is a conditional use?
Correct.
Are there other churches in Monroeville of any faith that are in R2s?
My belief is yes, although I couldn't give you a specific example.
And the occupancy permit that you applied for, what was the count on that?
I believe it's 90 or 95.
I believe it was 90, stated.
And how many, how many do you plan on having there at one time? Like, what is the size of your congregation?
Congregation is variable, sometime we have 30 people, other times we have 60 people, some other time it can exceed 90 people, so, but rarely that number will be once in a year, but mostly it is 30 to 60.
Okay, do I understand that you're having a kitchen in the basement?
Kitchen is for the, obviously, you know, after the congregation, the member can have lunch and dinner, so. It won't be huge kitchen, but yes, there will be a kitchen.
Okay.
And Dr. Raza, I'm not sure if, I'll ask this properly, but what's your primary day of worship? Like, in Christianity, it's typically Sunday mornings or Saturday evenings, what's your primary day or time?
Friday, Friday afternoon around between 1:30 to 2:00, 30 minutes.
Bruce, does the municipality have any say as to whether that property becomes tax exempt?
No. No, that's a county function. We don't, we don't pass on whether or not a property gets tax exempt. It's, that's the Allegheny County that does that.
So we have no say in that matter?
That's correct.
An elevation too, if you're interested.
I'd like to ask the doctor, will there be a private home there for the, your iman or whatever, your...
Religious leader.
Religious leader, thank you very much, Mayor. Yeah.
Yeah, at some point of time, there is a possibility that there may be...
I'm sorry, I cannot hear you.
At some point of time, there is a possibility there may be a religious leader or congregation leader.
But that's not in the original plan?
No, not at all.
Is that correct?
Yeah, not at all.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, the conditional use is because the building is going to be in the R2 zoning district, but the original, I guess the whole site here is split zone, part of it's R2, part of it's M1. Church is allowed in M1, but it's a conditional use in R2.
Permitted use in M1.
Correct.
And go back to your question, Tom, if they want to come back through and build a structure for some religious leader, that would be taxable, but that would require a subdivision change, because you can't put two principal structures on one lot.
Okay, thank you.
So they would have to come back in and re-subdivide it.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more time, just so I understand, is the house staying or going?
House is staying.
House is staying.
Is someone going to reside in that house?
Yes.
Okay.
Right now, it is rented, and, yeah, and we've been paying taxes on that, so...
Taxes on that and on all the property you're planning on building on, have you been paying taxes on that whole thing or not?
I'm sorry, Linda, I did not understand your question.
The land that you are talking about developing on, is that being taxed, the land itself right now?
Yes, right now it is, right now it is being taxed.
There's real estate taxes being paid, and once this development goes in, then it would become tax-exempt?
The part that is, will be the part of the house of worship, parking lot, and that will become tax-exempt.
Okay.
Assuming this, this all moves forward, when will all this happen?
When would you start construction?
When would you start?
As soon the municipal will permit us, we should be able to...
In other words, construction would start right away then, is what you're saying?
Yeah, hopefully, it will start right away, because there are still, you know, some, I guess there are some permits, or I don't know the whole process, but...
I have a question on the home. Now, that's where you're maybe going to have your religious leader live there, is that the plan?
Possible, possible.
That's what I was kind of getting your drift.
Yes.
There wouldn't be another structure, it'd be that same structure where your religious leader would be staying and living on?
If it gets to that point, yes.
Okay.
Would you intend on getting under construction this year?
Again, all depends on how the thing go. If you can get my drift, we started a project in 1999 in this borough on Beatty Road, and it took us two years to go through the borough, and at the end, the municipality council did not approve. Eventually, the court approved it, but by then, our budgets had gone too low to restart the project. So over here, I cannot correctly, honestly answer your questions. All it depends, how the municipality will treat, how the budget will drain, and we are hoping this time around, it will be possible.
So I think what everybody wants to know, let's assume all the approvals are in place, the highway occupancy permit, all the various stormwater calculations, parking, all, everything's done, will you be ready to move right away? Is there a finance issue? Do you have the finances in place to do the project?
We have the, right now, as we speak, we have the finances in place. Again, I have just refer you my experience 15 years ago, and it did not happen, because the finances were drained.
And back to Jamie, the planning commission has recommended approval subject to those two conditions.
Correct.
Those two you indicate have been met.
Correct.
Did they have any issue with the site, with the site plan or subdivision plans?
No.
So they were recommending approval of those as well?
Correct.
Can I ask what this building is like? I mean, like, what's it going to look like when I drive by there?
It will be a structure...
Do you have a rendering?
We do.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have an elevation drawing hidden underneath.
While Jamie's doing that, I would just, for the benefit of the public, the term "conditional use" has been bandied around, and just for the benefit of the public, a conditional use under the municipality's planning code, which is the state planning code and also in our zoning ordinance, is that it's a permitted use in that zoning district. However, the elected body can impose reasonable conditions upon a conditional use approval. It's permitted there, but they can impose upon, depending upon the testimony from the applicant and the planning commission, and also indeed from the public, can impose different conditions. For instance, an example would be buffering, now, you can't be unreasonable about different conditions, it has to be reasonable. I just thought the public should know what a conditional use is.
Could you elaborate?
Let me say, let me say it another way.
Okay, thank you.
From a legal standpoint, there's something called a special exception, and that's, that's when you go to the zoning hearing board under the, under the land development ordinance. There's a corresponding type of approval called a conditional use, and instead of going to the zoning hearing board, you come to council and get their approval. In this case, under our zoning ordinance, the church in an R2 district must come in and ask for specific permission to build, to build a church or to occupy a premise as a church in an R2 district. If the applicant satisfies all the requirements under our ordinance, they have a right to this as a matter of law, they have a right to it. It's, it's as if it's a permitted use, if they meet all those criteria. The same holds true for special exceptions before the zoning hearing board. If the applicant satisfies all the requirements under our zoning ordinance, they have the right to that special exception as a matter of law. I'm not hearing anything that tells me that they have not satisfied any of the requirements under our ordinances. Now, Tim's part has said, now, council can impose reasonable conditions, and when I say, when I use that word reasonable, that's a word that's subject to interpretation. I will tell you this, that courts generally will side with the landowner on what, they're going to give the gray areas to the landowner, as to what's reasonable. You couldn't say to the church, we want you to build a 55-foot-high wall all around the property, couldn't, the court would not sustain that. If you said, hey, I want you to plant 10 more bushes, yeah, the court would, you could probably do that. So you get a feel for what's reasonable and what isn't. So that's where we're at, that's why we're here tonight. Otherwise, we wouldn't be going through this process. It would be, the subdivision plan and a site plan are things that are reviewed administratively, they come to council, and 99 times out of 100, they're approved because they meet all the criteria. I'm not hearing yet anybody saying that we didn't meet the criteria here.
So to your question?
Yes.
We do have a colored elevation drawing. Dr. Raza can tell you which side is which.
This is the rendering by the architect, and if you are traveling on Haymaker Road, this is what you will see.
Okay.
This is mostly the facade or the front of the building, and this is the pitch of the, of the roof. And then this is from the northwest elevation, and this is from the funeral, from the funeral home side.
From the parking lot?
Beatty Road.
Got you.
From the Beatty Road.
Okay.
And this is the southeast side, and this one is the, the back opposite to this.
And where the building's going to sit, and where the park, where's the parking for this, for the...
I'll do this one. I'll take that back. So this is the building?
Mm-hmm.
Parking lot will be in the front along Old Haymaker.
Okay, so it won't affect any of the residents?
No, there'll be a little bit of parking along the side here, and then an asphalt circle here for turning around, two handicap spots, two handicap spots.
How many parking spaces under the ordinance are they supposed to have? They're saying up to 90 maximum.
I believe it's 24 off the top of my head. They're providing 43.
But it's in that range anyway.
Correct. I think it's 23.75 required, rounding up to 24.
But they do meet that standard as well.
Correct, and they're required to have three ADA spaces, and they're providing four.
Okay.
Jamie, I remember seeing early on in the project that there were some stormwater management problems, that's all been taken care of?
Yeah, it's kind of the process, everybody goes through a couple iterations. The only thing really of note here is that there was not any stormwater management on the site before. There's an existing storm sewer that runs between the properties here. They're going to discharge that same pipe, but obviously, there'll be a pond and two sets of tanks to capture some of that flow and meter it out.
Yeah, I was going to say, because it's all grass now, it absorbs storm water, they're going to put pavement down, so that's been taken care of.
Correct.
Okay, is there anybody else who has any questions?
The only other question I have, is there any space that would be like in the parking area that would shine into any of the residence homes or anything like that?
The municipality has asked us to give them a engineering drawing from a photometric plan, and I think we have it here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have it in the ones I brought down, but...
But they met that standard, does Jamie?
Yes.
My understanding is they do. Yeah, typically, they'll just put shields on the back of the lights where they abut the residential district, so light doesn't spill over.
I have a question for Bruce, I believe.
Thanks.
So if the project was to be approved for the purposes of building a religious structure there, and whatever happens, the finances fall through, it doesn't get built, what does that, what is the end result of that piece of property then? Would a residential home be able to be built there?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Taxed one of the year.
We have a timeframe under our ordinance that you have to act once approvals are obtained, 24 months, maybe it's four years, I, there's a period of time.
I believe it's five years.
Might be five years.
Two years to start, five to finish, I believe.
Okay. If it doesn't happen within that period of time, then the approval is voided, and it's back to where it is.
When does it come off the tax rolls? Once it's approved, the land, or once the project is completed?
I would like to talk to you about that in executive session.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, no other questions of the applicant? I noticed that there were some people that raised a right hand and swore to tell the truth, that they want to, one at a time, come up individually and offer some evidence or testimony on this matter, we'll try to hear from you. Just restate your name, if you would.
Yeah, please sign in and restate your name again, if you would.
David W. Watson, meeting mayor, council.
I'm sorry, sorry.
David W. Watson, W-A-T-S-O-N. The, actually, just to start off with, with Dr.'s very opening couple comments, he told the fact that, other constitution guarantees them this, you have to legally, you know, they're building a structure that...
David, are you a resident of Monroeville?
The, we're all in the, in the limits of...
Oh, you have to state, you have to state your address, that you are a resident of Monroeville.
The, well, anyhow, they're putting a blueprint out here that, in his own words, with building the church as a religious structure, will exempt it from taxes. Now, he also went into eventually that there will be a religious leader leading on here. Take the time, I implored the council, have them supply the boroughs, the counties throughout the country where they built these lots out, and see the processes that when they develop these, these lands, how they spread out, and they take over the adjacent lands, and eliminate the tax base on, as they contribute and combine them. This is going to be a burden. The, it's not a, not a, they don't conform to... not a, they don't conform to, or, I don't say "or," but a family structure. As you can see, residents have their wives and their grandmothers. Where's the wives and the daughters and the children? They're standing here speaking, and they're going to do a development where it's a...
Please talk into the mic, Dave.
To where it is a questionable lifestyle. And it's going to be a closed, once it's completed, it's going to close off the, they're closed, second people. That's all there is to it. The, it's anti-American. Their teachings are well, well against the format of normal American values. The, if this 3-5-1 Haymaker Road is developed into a religious, a building of, I believe, a church and a teaching facility, it's going to spread. They're going to take the other property, and you're going to lose both lots. They're going to combine them, and you're going to lose a tax base on both of them eventually. Yeah, I'm just asking the council to take, have them supply with their organization, they have a list of where all their buildings are. Look at the development status of each building and adjacent properties that they have acquired around each one of them, and look at all the tax base that went away when they built these buildings under the taxes exempt codes, because that's what the blueprint is for. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address council? Please sign in, state your name for the record, and as you do live in Monroeville.
I did sign in. Thank you. My name is Kim Wilson, and my location, Monroeville.
I can't hear.
I'm sorry. My name's Kim Wilson, and yes, I'm located in Monroeville.
That's my daughter's name.
Good name. Yeah, with all due respect, you know, I want everybody who...
Please talk into the mic.
I'm sorry. I'm short.
No, no, it'll pick you up.
We can hear him, ma'am.
Okay. I didn't touch it. I learned that from her. Anyways, one of my concerns, and a lot of us here in the community, we're concerned about, first of all, it being a traffic nightmare. Where are you going to park? When you have 24 spaces for parking, where are you going to put 90 people? He said that, in the event they do show up, and he said that they do. Another thing is the content of their beliefs, that their website indicates that they support the teachings of the Holy Quran. What the Quran teaches is that infidels, that would be nonbelievers, are forbidden to enter the premises once this becomes what it is. So you can't know what would be going on. The Holy Quran teaches, I don't know if they pick it apart, do they teach the entirety, I'm freezing, of the Holy Quran? But what the Holy Quran states, I need to know for my children, as a disabled parent, my grandchildren, my community, what safety that you have in place, Dr. Raza, to assure the safety of the community with your belief system that doesn't always go well with the rest of us. I mean, I have friends that are of the Muslim faith, and they're wonderful people, but everybody watches the news. We know what's happening in Chattanooga. We know what's going on on a world scale. Now, my concern is that you are teaching of the Holy Quran, like your website says, is that's what you support, that's what you teach. Do you also support the Imemiam Student Organization?
I, I don't understand the question. Who is...
Do you support the Imemias, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce that word.
I understand that.
I'm cold. This student organization?
I would like to know, where is this organization?
Okay, well, what, well, my point being, sir, is that I need to know that in my community, that we are safe with this facility. The Quran teaches me, I quote from the Quran, 9:123, "Make war on infidels in your neighborhood." I'm in your neighborhood. They also say, 2:191, "Slay unbelievers wherever you find them. When opportunity arises, kill infidels wherever you catch them. Punish unbelievers with garments of fire, hooked on iron rods, boiled water. Melt their skin and their bellies."
That's us.
This is the Quran. We are the infidels, unbelievers.
First off, let her continue with her testimony.
Yeah, well, he's my supporter.
I'll get to you, sir.
Yeah, and I do not intend any disrespect. I am also going with my constitutional right of freedom of my religion, and I'm fine with your freedom of religion or your speech or anything else.
To us.
You know, this is mine.
Speak to us.
Okay, and it goes on and on and on. But, "Do not hanker for peace with these infidels. Behead them when you catch them." This is what their holy book teaches them. This is what they support in this facility. And once this facility is established, we as infidels are shut out. Are there safeties in place that assures me that there isn't? I mean, there's radicals everywhere in every religion, granted, right? We all know this. Is this going to be, do you work with the Pittsburgh Task Force to prevent radicalization or terror? I mean, this is, these are houses that we know, in some instances, I'm not saying it, but in a lot of instances, we hear this on the news every day, what happened in Chattanooga. I mean, that they supposedly have waged war on me. Hey, I have no idea why that would be, but this is what the Holy Quran teaches, and that you support this.
Kim, you know what? Technically, you should be addressing me, but that's...
Yeah, I'm apologizing to him, because I know Dr. Raza. I'm a nurse, he's a doctor, and, you know, so, yeah, I mean, I'm, yes.
But I just wanted to get that straight.
But I want them to know that, you know, nobody is saying, "Hey, you guys look like a whole bunch of shitty folks." That is not the case. We don't know. I mean, I don't know who these folks could be. I don't know what's going to be going on in this facility. Do they have a working relationship with the Pittsburgh Anti-Terrorism Task Force? I mean, do they support this type of behavior? You know, we all need to know. Is this a branch of Muslim worship that would support the actions of the Islamic State, let's use? You know, or, I mean, did they go with the Constitution? He mentioned the Constitution. In Islam, some of them would go with the Cairo Convention, Article 24 and 25. Their laws is what stands, and it trumps our laws in our country. It trumps the Constitution, which is the laws of our land. We go and we govern, everything goes by our Constitution. But in Islam's relief, they go by the Cairo Convention, Article 24, 25, which trumps our Constitution. Anybody who is sworn into office in the current administration with our president, they have been sworn in on the Quran instead of the Holy Bible. So the Bible and our laws do not pertain to them. Beware of that. But there are some concerns about myself, my community, my children, my neighbors.
You're starting to repeat yourself.
Yeah, I am, but I'm trying, I'm trying to cover everything.
And I'm not trying to give you a map.
I'm trying to cover everything here.
I hear you.
But I want to know what kind of safeties we have in place. Do you have programs, so if you recognize that this is happening in your facility, and you see that, hey, that one guy is not right, there's something about him, he's scaring us, but we don't want anybody to judge us by calling him out. What are your policies for that type of behavior?
Again, you should be addressing him.
I am, I know, I know, I recognize this. But now, this is just an open-ended question, because I want you all to consider this. What are the insurances? What are the guarantees that we have to protect us, our children, our society from radical extremism? Because we all know it exists. It's on the news every day. And, yeah, like I said, we can't go in there. Once this is a done deal, whatever's going on in there, we won't know until somebody wants to be a martyr, and it's on the news. That's how that goes, because in that belief, they believe that if you kill these infidels, and especially at certain times of the year, like Ramadan, it's like a brownie point thing. I mean, I'm not good with these words, but you get it, that they are then martyrs, and they go to the afterlife in the glory, and they get these rewards, like gang of virgins in their heaven. And, you know, they're going, this is what the Quran teaches. If you read the Quran, the Prophet Muhammad, and some of the things, you're not allowed to draw a bad picture. If you draw a picture, a cartoon depicting, or anyway, say anything to disgrace, I'm sure you've heard this, too, that there's been shootings. They had a cartoon contest in Texas, draw the Prophet Muhammad, and people showed up and attacked them, that they believed that it's their job to kill you in horrible ways, beheading you. I mean, being, children being very alive. I mean, there's a lot of bad, bad things, and I just need to know, what are our guarantees? What kind of policies do they have in place to assure?
Kim, so, you know, there's a young man, I guess from the mosque, would like to address some of that issue, and if you'll stand up, sir, and will you swear him in, Bruce?
I'll raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the good truth. So, you got it?
Yes.
Please sign in and then state your name for the record, sir. Kim, is there anything else you wanted to bring up?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then we'll address it to anybody else that wants to come up.
That's okay. Thank you very much.
My name is Montalal Jabri. I'm not sure if you can hear me right.
Sure.
My name is Montalal Jabri. I live in Monroeville. I am part of this community. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for allowing us to come here and to listen to us and, you know, our concerns. I am very, very pleased that I came today, and I had heard the honesty. I'm very glad that the members of the Monroeville community here were speaking with full honesty. We would love for them to speak like that and always address these concerns to us. The, I'm sorry, what was your name? I didn't...
Kim.
Kim, yeah. Kim mentioned a lot of significant points, which shows that it's very unfortunate how media can relay a lot of wrong information about Islam. So I'd like to correct some of...
The Quran.
Yes.
Okay.
I think we allowed you to speak for 20 minutes without interrupting. I believe we have the same, right?
I apologize.
No problem, ma'am. Thank you. So, the first point is that the Holy Quran is not to be understood like this directly. We have experts that translate the Holy Quran. That's number one. Every religion has a holy scripture that has people who are specialized in defining, just like the Holy Bible. You can't just come and address it any way you like and say, "Well, this is in the Bible, therefore, this is what it means." A lot of the verses that she mentioned has nothing to do with the world we live in today. It has nothing to do with terrorism. It's been understood differently. The second point is that, in Islam, just like in Christianity, there's a lot of sectors. There was a lot of different understandings of Islam. So you have to differentiate between extremists, who are found in every single religion out there, extremists, right? In Islam, there are two main groups, many groups, but two main groups, the Shiite group and the Sunni group. We are among the Shia, the group that has been a victim of ISIS, the group that has been a victim of terrorism for the past 1,400 years since the departure of the Prophet. Shia are the group of Muslims who believe that Islam is all about love and peace and respecting others. A point that she mentioned was you're not allowed to have infidels. First of all, we don't believe that you're infidels. This is the interpretation of ISIS. ISIS is killing my family in Iraq. They killed some of my family members. They are killing us every day, simply because we don't agree with them. The religion of Islam, and our scholars that we learn Islam from, in holy, in Najaf, in Iraq, teach us that it is obligatory on you as a Muslim, once you enter a land, you must respect the law of that land. And we can show you proof, if, you know, if you think I'm just saying this just to convince you, we do have proof that can back it up from the websites. If you go on sistani.org, you will see that he says you are not allowed to break the rules of the land. And the way he justifies it, he says, once they give you the visa, once they give you the green card, once they give you that paper to enter, that is a legal agreement between you and them, and as a Muslim. And one of our main chapters just says, aufu bil uqud, you must respect contracts. It is a contract that we live by, living under the Constitution of the United States. We must respect the law of the land. Our religion says, if you don't like it, leave. If I don't like living under the rules of this country, I have a passport, and I have the right to leave. We do not believe in violence. We believe in the Holy Quran. She mentioned verses, but she forgot the other verses. A verse that says, "He who kills a soul hath killed the entire humanity." And the verses that she mentioned came along the lines of defending yourself. When it says, "Find them and kill them," in one of the verses that she mentioned, that was during the time of the Prophet Muhammad, when there were wars, and there were people attacking the city of Medina. And he says that, "You have the right to go out there and defend yourself and kill." Yes, this is what America's about. This is what the whole world's about. Right now, when terrorism started threatening us as US citizens, as Americans, as humans, what did we do? We didn't actually wait for terrorists to come here to New York or to Washington. We started going all the way to Afghanistan to resist them over there, right? And this is our right to do that, to defend ourselves and our country and our people. So Islam, the form of Islam that we're from is called Shia Islam. You have the right to search that. We believe that you are our equals in humanity. Our prophet has stated this main line that defines Islam. He says, "Islam believes that all people in the world are two types. The first type is your brother in faith, the guys that share the same faith with us." And he said, "The second type is your equal in humanity. All of you here are our equal in humanity. You have the right to live as humans, and we have the duty and obligation to respect you and to respect your rights. You are more than welcome on the grand opening to come, and you will be on the first line in our center, and it is an honor for us to have you there." And you can come and speak in our podiums. We welcome your ideas. You can talk about Christianity. You can talk about anything you like. We are very open. Those close-minded extremists that have killed us before they have killed you, because I said they existed 1,400 years ago, are the ones that believe if you don't agree with them, you must be beheaded. We do not believe in killing. We do not believe in any type of violence. A lot could be said, a lot could be said. Every verse she mentioned, we could talk about what it means and how it does not relate or pertain to you. And please search Shia Islam. If you get a chance on Google to know that we are a total different group of Muslims. We do not represent any of that evil, radical, extreme Islam that media's trying to show. It is very unfortunate that we don't have money to have satellite channels out there to express ourselves and to tell you what we're really about. Unfortunately, there's a lot of agendas behind certain media channels to destroy the reputation of Islam by bringing ISIS. Do you read that every day, September 11th was very tragic? We still, you know, have not...
I'd like you to stay for Kristen, what she was talking about.
Yeah.
I mean, I appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah, but one thing I would like to say is that we have lost many September 11th, but every day in Iraq, there's a September 11th. You probably don't watch news. You may, you may not, but every day, we have a September 11th. Every day, we have children from our families beheaded in front of their... Aren't we Muslims? Why are they doing that to us? Well, simply because they don't believe in Islam. They believe in agendas. They are radical people who use religion to justify their actions. So Islam, the Islam that we believe in respects all of you and believes that you all have the right to live and have the right to safety. And I'd like to ensure, Kim, you will be safe in that neighborhood. That neighborhood, that organization will promote nothing but peace, but love, but respect. And if there's any further questions, Kim, you are more than welcome to visit us in that center, and we will answer all of your concerns. And you are, as well as all the members that came with you, are in our hearts. We respect you, and we admire you, and we appreciate your honesty. Thank you very much for listening.
Would that be anytime, or just the opening, sir?
Anytime.
Anytime.
Every Friday, you are welcome.
You have to come up to the microphone.
I want to touch on some things that he said. First of all, Shiite Muslims, Iran, Iranians, oh, Shiite Muslim. So that gives you an indication of, the country of Iran is Shiite. The Bible teaches us love. If you read the Quran, he says, "Well, you have to have a professional interpreter to understand what it means." I think it's pretty blatant when the Holy Quran 860 tells us, "Muslims must muster all weapons to terrorize the infidels." How does that end up to be self-defense? I am just concerned about my safety, your safety, and this, Tarazza, that they are to lie. In the Islam faith, they are permitted to lie to the infidel to enhance their religion, because they want us all to be that. They want it to be the one-world government, being the Sharia law, and Islam to be the one-world thing. Back in the day, the Ottoman Empire, if you're familiar with history, history is repeating itself. Thank you for your time.
Just one last point.
You have to come up to the microphone, sir. You have to come up to the microphone, sir.
So, Kim, or just addressing all of you, if we believe that we lie, then there's no point, we can have a discussion, there's no point of defending ourselves. If everything I said to you was a lie, even though I swore to tell nothing but the truth, then really, we can't go on further. What if what you're saying is all a lie? Your understanding of the Quran could be a lie. What you're saying about this could be a lie. Iran and us have nothing to do with this. Christians live in Canada, live in the United States, live in Japan, live in Russia. Does it mean that when you're a Christian that lives in Russia, you have allegiance to the United States? Or does it mean, if you live in the United States as a Christian, you have allegiance to Russia? At a certain point in time, we had war with Russia, right? Or we had conflicts with the Soviet Union. There were Christians in the Soviet Union, there were Catholic in the Soviet Union. Yes, they are Catholics here as well. Does that mean that they have some kind of, because they're Catholic, they have to be the same thing? Iran is Shia, yes, but we have total different policies, things that Iran believe we don't agree with. We have nothing to do with the Iranian political policy. We are here to practice our faith as Shia Muslims. Our faith is to teach our children, our families, to live a respectful life, to worship the God that we worship every Friday, and in the end, go on with our life. And as I mentioned earlier, our religion, our prophet, says, your brother in faith, your equal in humanity. Once you have found weapons in our centers, in our homes, then you can say that, yeah, you know, your Quran says to prepare weapons and to do all that. As I mentioned, the verses of weapons have to do with war situation only. That's why I said expert, because there's a lot of other verses that come with it. These have to do with war situations. Yes, you have to have weapons for war. I don't think you're going to go out to war with flowers. You're going to have to have weapons to defend yourself. This is just the final point I'd like to.
We get it. Thank you. All again, leave it open.
Okay. Hold on. You understand, I just want everybody to understand, this is a conditional use hearing for a piece of property to determine whether or not it should be used as a church or not. If there's something in our zoning ordinance that talks about the Holy Quran, or any of this other stuff that's been discussed.
This is the condition. I mean, is there a condition that if this proves to be an unsafe factor?
You wouldn't get a judge anywhere, anywhere, that would add a condition to saying, if they're proven to be terrorists.
Right.
You can kick them out. That's why we have a whole system of policing. I mean, if the Catholic church down the street is a terrorist group, this municipality doesn't enforce that. That's why you have the federal, state, and county people to enforce those things. We have a police force.
Once they're aware of it.
Yeah.
And you and I cannot just stroll into a mosque.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wants to offer testimony?
Bring, bring.
I mean, we've done it three times.
Yeah, this isn't, the reason this even came up, it's not, they are putting a mosque next door to me.
I understand.
I'm not moving my home and building a home next to their mosque. That's why it's in question for me.
And state your name again, sir.
David Watson, once again. My question is, on the adjacent properties here, was there a requirement for the adjacent property owners to, for a variance hearing?
There is no.
Since there's no variance hearing required to combine these commercial lot and residential lot next to a residential lot? The, the.
Dave, let me help you.
Property owners.
When anybody wants to do any subdivision changes, or build anything, all the properties, and I forget how.
Notification. That was my question.
They're all notified. There's also postings.
Yeah, that was my question, too, if they were notified.
And if I'm building next to you, and you had some issues, you should go to the planning commission, or the zoning, or whatever. Apparently, the mosque has met all the requirements, and that's my understanding of it correctly.
So, they, everything has, has.
Yes, and that's the process. And I mean, that's what it's for them.
Because I think we skipped over that part at the beginning, because he did lay out the foot plan of these two lots, and the adjacent property owners. That was what we.
They can only, they can only build what has been approved. They can only do what was approved. And if they, any changes, as Mr. Dice had said, they would have to come back and redo application, and et cetera.
The highway occupancy permit is still pending, though.
Yeah, that is correct. And as Mr. Dice stated, on the highway occupancy permit, if the state would happen to turn that down, this project is finished.
There you go. Thank you.
Mayor.
Sir.
Let's get through the testimony. Anybody else want to offer any testimony? Seeing no hands, then the testimony is closed on the public hearing. The requirement's under the municipality's planning code for conditional use having been met. Now, council, it's back to you, if you have any questions.
Mr. Hart.
I just wanted to state that this development is in my ward, and the only two phone calls I've had on the whole issue was that residents, I guess, getting tired of too much property going tax-exempt. Hence, my question to Mr. Dice, does the municipality have any say as to whether a piece of property goes tax-exempt? And if I heard you correctly, the answer is no.
Unequivocally, no. We don't have a, we don't have a department that weighs in on nonprofits. That's done strictly through the Allegheny County.
So we could use, like, for say, UPMC East as an example?
Sure.
The residents were notified, how? I found out two days ago in the paper, in the newspaper, I found out in the trip.
Okay. They can't hear you on the television. Now, Nick, what did you say? And the testimony's closed now, okay? That's the problem. What'd you say, Nick?
I know, but we could use the example of any church, or hospital, or nonprofit organization.
Right.
Or church.
Right. You know, all of those agencies throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. This isn't just Little Monroeville. I mean, you can go to Plumb, and Penn Hills, and all the way across to Philadelphia. If you meet the criteria of a charitable foundation, or a charitable use trust, and you purchase a piece of property, and furtherance of that charity, or that philanthropic use, or religious use, then you can acquire tax-exempt status. It happens all the time. I'm going to say 25% of the city of Pittsburgh's tax-exempt because of the various hospitals.
41%, I believe.
Might be, might be, might be 41%. I know it's a lot.
No wonder we're so much trouble.
I'm sorry for speaking out of turn, but this is what I was addressing to the council. Please take the time and have them list the boroughs across the country, and see the footprint that grows around.
All right, again, I'm sorry, sir.